And get started with our Commissioners Status Update Meeting. Today's date is August 26, 2025. The time is 10:01 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Eberline and Matari. Commissioner Duncan is absent today. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Hearing none. We'll go on to our first item, Panhandle Health District Update. It's a discussion item, and we have Director Eric Ketner here, please.
Good morning Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity this morning to provide an update on the efforts of the Panhandle Health District. This morning, I'm going to provide just a very brief overview. We've closed out fiscal year '25, and then provide you with a bit of an update on current discussions at the board level. As is unsurprising, the growth in the community, and particularly in Cootney County, we continue to see strong numbers in the septic permitting program. Nearly 1,000 food establishment licenses were issued. Subdivisions are up, and we continue to do a lot of collaborative work with Cootney County Community Development in regards to building permits. I think we reviewed over 1,500 this past year. And we also are working with the county on family subdivisions, which is a streamlined process to allow those splits to occur, as well as bulletin 77 construction, which I understand is changes in codes that allows more multifamily developments to occur. We also continue to have a strong presence in our aquifer protection efforts. We're continuing to review over 1,200 facilities. We did over 200 inspections in the past year, and continue to work with property owners in, or sorry, business owners, in order to find solutions to better contain the product that they have on their site. The other thing is, we are working with the community to try to develop a committee to develop best management practices. That's what we employ at those businesses, to make sure that all available options to commercial operations are available, so that they can do that work. Outside of environmental, we are seeing growth in our Women's Infants and Children's Program. We're serving about over 1,500 individuals here in Cootney County. Also, our home visiting program, which is an area where we send nurses or qualified individuals into what I'll call high-risk homes to assist in families staying together, providing resources and support to individuals that otherwise, you know, may struggle from addiction issues or other financial issues. One area that we're making additional strides is in the opioid settlement funds. We currently do have programs where we're in schools across the five counties, but we're enhancing the curriculum to include substance abuse, substance misuse, curriculum to sort of better educate individuals at both elementary and middle school and high school level. And the curriculum does change depending on the age group. And our theme is staying busy with, well, with regular duties frankly, but as you're aware, we have had a few measles cases in the community that we're tracking and we're working with school districts as far as providing guidance on that, as school is pending opening here very, very shortly. Any questions on those particular items?
Any questions? No? No? I'm just kind of curious. You mentioned multifamily units. What is Panhandle Health doing with respect to that?
I think how that works is that the tie-in with our septic system permitting, because the rule is one residence per five acres, but in recognition of housing shortage and the housing challenges, we're trying to work within that rule set to appropriately protect the aquifer while also trying to work with the county in addressing the need for housing in the community. I don't know if I adequately answered that.
Well, I'm just curious. You know, I think one of the challenges, at least from my perspective on a policy side, is to try to mitigate density as much, because density, it changes the character of a community, and it also leads to more rules and regulations, right?
I couldn't agree with you more.
And so, you know, if we want to be a community that doesn't have so many rules and regulations and, you know, conformity standards, if you will, then, you know, mitigating that density, I think, is important. And that's why I asked that question. The other component that you mentioned was just protecting the aquifer. And again, you know, more density, more businesses, right? The more need for businesses as more people move here. And one of the challenges that I always hear with people is, and as a candidate for office, no one has ever come up to me and said, you know, Bruce, how can we make Cootney County grow faster, right? It's usually the opposite. How can we just slow it down a little bit, right? And so, while I realize there might be a need for housing because people want to move here, that doesn't mean that their rights trump the rights of people who live here right now. And the word I get from people is, you know, how can we slow it down so we can manage to a slow and steady type of approach, as opposed to these huge, fast-growth spurts that far outpace infrastructure capabilities? And with the businesses, you know, are we doing the bare minimum to protect the aquifer, or are we setting the standard that exceeds the bare minimum? Because I know this board has had an issue before recently with some petroleum products, and we've tried to, you know, exceed the bare minimum, because if something bad happens, because the law of probability says that it increases as there's more and more activity, then what remedy, what is in place to keep it from becoming the next Airway Heights, where we had issues with water getting contaminated with, I believe, fire suppressant material from an airport?
And I think one way I can answer that is that that's part of developing a regional committee on the best management practices, to make sure that what containment issues are identified or are acceptable are meeting the best available technology.
Yeah. Well, your department is a firewall to help mitigate, you know, completely unrestrained and irresponsible growth. And so I just hope that that's part of the thought process when developing policies, to balance, you know, the want for housing, and, you know, the want for preserving our community, and what makes it so charming, and draws, you know, makes it a high quality of life for those who are here. But I have no other questions. I certainly appreciate you giving us the update.
And one other item I did want to bring up as far as current issues with the board is, we did have a board meeting last week, and as you may recall, there was a workshop back in May regarding clinical services at the Health District. And we have seen, I've conducted several assessments, we have seen a significant decline in demand for our clinical services over the past 10 years. I do believe, after looking into that matter, we've seen federally qualified health centers, Kinnick Sioux Clinic and Heritage Health down here that have frankly picked up, I believe those clients, and picked up that space that had previously been held by the Panhandle Health District. The discussion that I had with the board last week was that it, on its current trajectory, it's difficult to support continuing to stand up clinical services. And that may be an area where we're looking to change our, oh, I don't want to say change our focus. We have several core programs that we do, we do well, and we have continued strong demand for. This is not one of them, to share with the board. For fiscal year '26, $363,000 of county support dollars was proposed to be used for clinical services, so it's not an insignificant amount. If there was a better way to use those funds on a program, you know, or consider the county having a smaller appropriation in future years. So, just something that the board is continuing to work on, and I'm continuing to monitor very closely, and we will continue to bring updates on that issue in the future.
Yeah, and for those who are not familiar with the subject, this is something that Panhandle Health, I guess many decades ago, kind of was mandated to provide such services. But when the Unaffordable Care Act got passed in the late 2000s, money started going into private entities to provide these services, and so in essence, there was competition. And so, what, and I think you said this, what was once a thriving, you know, clinical services department for the region no longer is because of that. So, if the services are going to be provided by another entity, I would definitely support your recommendation of shutting it down, that aspect of Panhandle Health, and returning that money back to the counties, and ultimately, the taxpayers, if it makes good sense. But I know also, we're in this transition phase with a new administration, and so we don't know exactly what's going to happen. They could cut those funds.
That is correct.
And create a huge void in the area, too.
There is a larger discussion here. I do know that the federally qualified health centers are concerned with their funding model based on changes to Medicaid eligibility. I do know that rural hospitals, including, I don't want to call them, I know that there are also concerns at Cootney Health with what these changes may look like. When you have a reduction in availability to preventative services, which is what Panhandle Health District has historically provided, and if there's a downsizing that you see at Kinnick Sioux and Heritage, that demand can then fall to rural hospitals, which are also in a challenging situation. So, yes, we are definitely in a period of transition, and we'll certainly do what we can to best serve the public.
Well, keep us informed on that, if you will, please.
Yes, I will.
So, any other questions? No? All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, next up, item two, Insurance Quarterly Review. It's a discussion item with John Getty. You want to hit the button there?
John Getty and Jeff Smith for the Record Insurance Northwest. Commissioners, I submitted my quarterly report last week, and a couple of things that I need to update. The remaining work, the last bullet, we've already completed the bi-monthly asset changes. I've got a couple of questions in for Erica, which will finish that off. There's a list of the areas that we have not done, building walkthroughs yet, that need to be done. And I'm still awaiting the redlined renewal policy to go through that. I'm told that will come sometime in the first part of September. And then I can give you a report on that. And as I indicated, Jeff is going to take over the day-to-day processing for a couple of weeks, first part of September. And from October 1st on, you will have both of us working on your business. I will step back a little bit and kind of watch over Jeff's shoulder, but I'll be available for every activity. I think that's, do you have anything to add?
No, I just think that having two agents available to you, obviously, you know, he wants to travel with his wife a little bit, and I've been in Cootney County since 1986, so, you know, I'm dedicated to my clients, of which Cootney County is one of them, and to make sure that we're doing the best and being a very good fiduciary for the county.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? No? Well, I appreciate you doing these walkthroughs. The only question I have is, are you able to get the information you need in a timely fashion?
Commissioner, I have to thank your asking Sarah Masters to ask that question. Right after that, I got the most important schedule, that was solid waste, and I took, I'm guessing, about $2 million worth of value off that list, based on the actual cash value of the items that solid waste submitted. That doesn't do a whole lot for premium this year, but next year, it will be taken into consideration.
Well, you know, that's an important point, because this is how we save money for the taxpayers, right? By reducing the premium and not over-insuring assets that aren't worth as much. So, if there is a time in the year where you deem it appropriate for us to start getting you these lists soon enough, so that we can affect the following or the upcoming premium, that would be appreciated.
And Commissioner, I normally, when I submit the renewal policy, that's one of the recommendations that I've done on an annual basis. I don't know that it's gotten to the departments where it should be. And just another comment, the Sheriff's Office has not submitted its change of valuation. And I've met twice with two ladies at Cootney North about contents, and that's not been submitted again. The Sheriff's Office has been in fluctuation in how they're occupying the various buildings, so that's going to be in a state of flux for a while.
Well, what would be helpful, and I think that, I would hope that the board would agree, is let us know, and we'll start asking questions about that, because there is no one, you know, panacea swipe of the magic wand to save money. There's not one area. It's 1,000 little areas that add up to big money. And so, if you're getting resistance or not able to get the information you need in a timely fashion, just give us as much heads-up notice as possible, and we'll figure out what's going on.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I would like to add, I've been working with John for well over a decade, and over the last 18 months, it's just not Cootney County, but the other entities that we work with, that the walkthroughs that we've done and the valuations we've done were substantial. And so the...
Going up or down?
Either way. But I think the maintenance on those items going forward for the next several years, it wouldn't require a huge, major overhaul like we've done in the last 18 months, but, you know, good, solid maintenance on that, and making sure that new items are insured properly, as well as valuations changed on aging assets, could make a difference in the long run.
And I would add one other thing. I've always been an advocate for underwriting by driving around. Jeff was driving down Ramsey, oh, a couple of weeks ago, and saw a building under construction, kind of behind the city street department, and behind the Sheriff's Office, I mean, the city police office. So, he asked the question, and I asked both Erica and then her counterpart at the city. It turned out it was a city building that we had no idea was going up yet. But that's one of the services that we get by just being in the car and in the area.
Well, you should know, because as construction begins, that now becomes a financial liability, and subject to loss if something were to happen during construction.
And again, that's one of the important things we've offered, to review contracts for insurance provisions. And most of those contracts between the county and the construction people have insurance clauses, and it should have either a course of construction or builder's risk clause in it that identifies who's responsible for the building as it's going up.
Yeah. Well, please keep us informed of what you need, because we should be getting you the information, so we get the correct amount of insurance. Not too little for expensive assets, and not too much for depleted or depreciated assets.
Right.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is item three, Proposed Deed for Centennial Trail Segment in Post Falls. And we have Pat Braden from our Civil Prosecuting Attorneys Division.
First of all, I wanted to compliment Mr. Getty's shirt, supporter of the Vandals. But with that, this is something that's been before you before. Just as a refresher, on the screen, the parcel in green is the parcel in question, currently owned by the county. The parcel in blue of the Centennial Trail right-of-way. Centennial Trail to the west of that is in blue, and that's also owned by the county. To the east, in the orange, is Centennial Trail right-of-way, owned by City of Post Falls currently. And then the parcel in pink is the, are the parcels owned by Rose of Sharon Enterprises, which is seeking to do a development of that property within the City of Post Falls. The issue is whether to allow a crossing of the Centennial Trail here on the east end of the parcel to allow for a second access to and from the property. Originally, this board, or a prior board, had approved that as an emergency-only access, but then the developer, along with the city, have since requested that that be a general ingress egress right-of-way. And the board, and this board, in a prior meeting, has, did express some resistance to that idea. So, the, both the developers, attorney Scott Porman, who is here, and the city's Assistant City Attorney Chris Gabbard is also here. They've requested that this come forward before the board for a final decision whether or not to convey the property in green to the City of Post Falls, to facilitate the approval of that access. And both Mr. Porman and Mr. Gabbard, I would encourage you to give them the opportunity to speak, if they wish, to this issue. But I just wanted to bring it before the board for a final decision whether or not to do this. There has been a quick claim deed drafted, and I've approved it from a legal perspective, but of course, it's the board's prerogative whether to execute it or not.
Thank you. Questions? I have one question that's kind of come to mind.
Yes.
You know, initially, when we discussed transferring the property to the city, you know, I was really under the impression it would be a longer stretch. And, you know, one of the things that happens when we do that is you have this multi-jurisdictional control over a single entity, in essence, the Centennial Trail. And the Centennial Trail requires maintenance.
Yes.
And anyone who's ever driven through a city or across a state line, you'll notice on one side of that line, the road is really nice, and the other side, it's full of potholes, and it's poorly maintained. And so, what mechanism is in place to ensure that when the Centennial Trail gets maintenance, that it's actually going to be uniform, and that it won't turn into, well, this is the county's side, this is the city's side. One of them is great, the other one is a hazard.
There is joint powers board that is in existence, which consists of the county, City of Post Falls, and City of Port Lane, and they meet periodically. And that's one of the things that they discuss would be maintenance, you know, building and maintenance standards for the trail. And the trail currently is uniformly maintained and in a uniform condition.
Well, currently.
Jurisdictional lines. Currently, yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
But that would be the mechanism that you would be seeking is already in place.
And so, when the time is correct for proper maintenance, each of the entities would be compelled to contribute their share?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So, I don't have any further, I don't have any further comment unless there's more questions.
Jointly between Post Falls and Cootney County?
And Port Lane.
And Port Lane. So, and Post Falls would be responsible for their prorata portion of the trail?
Yes.
So...
How many times have we gone through this and flopped?
Say that again.
How many times have we gone through this exercise and nothing happens? What's going to be...
Exercise of...
Forgetting this thing taken care of.
Whether to convey this.
Yes.
It's been before the board a few times, you know, I'll be honest. But that's why I've brought it today, so a final decision can be made, hopefully.
We'll see how it shakes out.
Okay. I don't have anything further, so...
I don't have any other questions. Really, the big is just, you know, who's going to be responsible for the maintenance, and will there be correct, periodical maintenance on that? I wish that, you know, we could figure out ways to have fewer crossings over these trails, because that's the whole point of getting the bikes off the streets. But if Post Falls wants to do that, it's their prerogative. It's their city.
Right. Correct.
And, you know, to be honest, you know, I kind of see this as a unicorn, because you have a parcel between the Centennial Trail right-of-way and the Interstate 90 right-of-way here, and an east-west street immediate, you know, to the south of the trail crossing, that doesn't really exist anywhere else in the West Post Falls area.
Well, unicorn today.
True.
Anything else? No? Okay. Thank you. Next up, item four, Request for Transfer of Former ITD Right-of-Way to an Adjacent Property. Owner is Venue Properties LLC, and we have Pat Braden again.
Let's see. This is a, speaking of unicorns, this is kind of a unique situation, and I'll come up to the, come up to the screen and speak loudly. The parcel in question is this kind of whitish, you know, off-white strip that's about 1.6 acres in size. The owners of these two parcels, which you can see are in the personal zone, are adjacent to this, and they would like to own this. This was right-of-way for Highway 95, but the Idaho Transportation Department has released their claims to this parcel to the owners here. But when there was a title search done, the county came up as being in the chain of title. And we didn't know this before. But this has happened also with the parcel immediately to the south, owned by the ELAs, and the county came up in the title search on that. And at the time, the county conveyed the parcel in question to the ELAs, and then they consolidated the parcel. And the owners of these parcels would like to do the same. So, I have drafted a deed that would just quickly, maybe interest the county may have in this parcel, to the owner of these parcels, and then they can go ahead and consolidate as they...
As they would like, within the
As they would like within, within the county's rules. So we're just, and Representative of the owner, Stephanie Blaylock, is here also. And if she has any comments, I would like you to entertain them. But again, I don't really have any other, other comments other than to introduce this proposal.
Thank you. Questions? I'm curious, isn't there, is there a trail that goes up there, another bike trail?
There is, there is a bike trail. And there's also a, the bike trail runs within the ITD right-of-way here. And then Pope Road, the access road is over here.
And it's not a problem to, to, in essence, give the property?
I don't think so.
We don't have to put it up for auction?
Basically, you know, whatever interest we may have in, in the parcel, and it's not clear whether we, whether we do or not. But that way, any interest that we do have will be conveyed to the, the Christians, the owners of the two parcels immediately to the east. And it would be a, you know, basically a compromise and settlement, keep us out of a quiet title action.
Okay. So we're not 100%, we don't have ownership of it. It's just we have our name in the history.
Yes.
As having some control over it. And, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That's how I would describe it.
Okay. Well, if there's no other questions, thank you very much. Okay. Next up is item five, interest and penalties from a lawsuit. This is an executive session. Did we want to go into that? Most likely. All right. So I will go to public comment. Come on down. Just identify yourself and you get three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Hartman for the record. This is my first meeting since I've been out of the country for the last three to four weeks. Prior to that, I was at a Paccadur meeting and I met the Deputy Superintendent, who was doing a speaking there, Mike Nelson, who has a PhD. And I brought up the topic of school resource officers. And I asked him, I said, what do your school counselors' salary per year? He said, they're $45,000. I said, well, our school resource officers are substantially higher than that. And I said, would you be willing to work with the Commissioners and the Sheriff's Office to see if there's some way we could more optimize our school resource officers and maybe increase the work that the school counselor does, since they're about half the salary of a school resource officer? And he said, yes, I would be glad to do that. And I said, is it okay if I hand out your business cards to the counselors, or to the Commissioners? And he said, yes, that they can call me and I'll see what I can do as far as maybe lowering the resource cost from our Sheriff's Department. May I leave these cards with you?
Yes.
This one's also one from Commissioner Duncan.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come up for public comment? Yes. Just state your name, please, for the record.
Good morning, Commissioner. Scott Porman, Attorney for Rose of Sharon. Going back to the deed request to the City of Post Falls, I just wanted to clarify a few things. So the city has already annexed the parcel that's owned by my client that was shown in pink on Pat's presentation. So that's now part of the city. So this segment of right-of-way would be adjacent and a continuation of the city. When we were before you last in June with an easement request, I heard the board expressing concerns over maintenance and obligations and the costs associated with ownership of various segments of the Centennial Trail. This proposed deed to the city, we hope you see as a step in the right direction where the county is decreasing its obligations for trail maintenance and the city would be assuming those obligations as part of this transfer. This is just one less segment. It's not the comprehensive solution that I, I heard the board hoping for. And maybe that happens someday. I'm sure that Joint Powers Board would have to be involved in something more comprehensive than this. But this is certainly a step in the right direction as far as increasing city ownership and city maintenance and obligations and decreasing the county's responsibilities. So with that, we hope you will approve this transfer. It's not just for a new subdivision that, well, actually, that's already been approved by the city and it's an affordable housing type development. It, it's also going to facilitate the city, and I'll let Mr. Gabbard address this if he wants to, but the city's plans for future infrastructure as part of their wastewater treatment system to get from underneath I-90 through all of that property and then across the river to some land they own on the south side of the river. So there's, there's more involved here than just a road crossing for a subdivision. There's other infrastructure that's going to be facilitated by this if it's approved. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on down. Please state your name.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Gabbard, Deputy City Attorney for the City of Post Falls. I was asked to be here just as a courtesy to address any questions you might have on this parcel. I don't have the history that you folks do on it. From the city's perspective, we've talked to the city and they're willing to accept this segment for ownership and the maintenance. Back to your question, Mr. Everlin, there is a joint powers agreement. I reviewed it this morning and I talked to my Parks and Rec folks. So what happens is the, and your question, Mr. Matarri, has to do with the continuity of maintenance and everything else. I think the city and the county have traditionally and historically worked very well together. There is no difference in segments in the trail from one section to the next that I've seen. I run that trail, try to do it daily, but I don't. But there is a joint powers agreement. None of this transfer affects that in any material way other than the contribution and the extension of the city's services to parts where we have annexed. You had expressed some concerns previously and said, yeah, we want to divest through the whole thing all the way out to Pleasant View. The reason, and I think we discussed that previously, we discussed it previously with the prior city attorney when he was here, is we don't have any property that's annexed out there. So this segment makes sense as kind of a step-along basis, but we don't have, the city doesn't have property that's annexed out to that further portion of the trail. So where this makes sense, where it's contiguous with the city, and we don't want to unduly expand the boundaries of any jurisdiction into the county. Obviously, annexation is a hot topic issue. We're not looking at expand the city borders any more than is absolutely necessary unless it makes sense. But this piece does make sense and that's why it stops up at that, that Maguire Road section. Anyways, I just wanted to add that context for you and address any other questions you had. But I know we're in public comment section, so I do appreciate the consideration and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody on the telephone? 1036, meaning adjourn. Thank you.
No, no, you're going into executive.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. You saved me there. Okay. So we're going on to item five. Since we're going into executive session, I will take a motion to enter into executive session 1F.
So be it.
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061F.
Second.
Commissioner Everlin?
Aye.
Commissioner, Chair, ah, excuse me. You blew all my brain cells. Chair Matarri.
Aye. Thank you. Aye, thank you.